Just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something. You know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda? Let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college. See if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. The fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información. Y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Yeah, sí, pues es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de...
Board of Supervisors meeting to order roll call, please.
Supervisor McGordy?
Here.
Supervisor Mulhern? Supervisor Hashak?
Here.
Supervisor Jardy?
Here.
Supervisor Williams?
Here.
We could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? We will now move on to item number two, Public Expression. Public Expression is the portion of the agenda that allows the public to speak for two to three minutes on any item of interest so long as it is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. While members of the public are welcome to address the board, under the Brown Act, the board is prohibited from engaging in deliberation or taking action on items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to provide comment on items of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction that are not on the agenda, please come forward at this time. If you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine. And if you're in the room, please come forward. And if you could say your name for the record, that is helpful. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alex Rounds. I'm with First Five Mendocino and wanted to share a little bit about our policy committee, including our executive director's review of the grand jury report. I'm just going to refer to my notes because I don't want to miss anything.
Alex, we're not quite on that item yet. Can I ask you what we will get there? That will be item number three B.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward in the room and I have no hands raised online, so we will move on to item three B. But we're going to have a staff discussion and then I'll open up the public comment. Okay, discussion and possible action, including appointment of an ad hoc committee regarding the response to the 2324 grand jury report. So this grand jury report was in your board packet and we need to create an ad hoc to respond to the grand jury. Okay, not seeing any pins quite yet. I will go ahead and invite public comment. Thank you very much, Alex, for your patience with the process.
You're helping me get the flow right. So as I was saying, my name is Alex Rounds. I'm with First Five Mendocino and our policy committee, including our executive director, met to talk about the grand jury report. As an agency that focuses on families with children under five, we feel like there's some special knowledge that we can share and in the interest of serving the families of Mendocino County. I'm going to just check my notes here. One of the findings, let's see, finding number three and the recommendation on the foster care in Native American children. We wanted to note that it is the value of having Native Americans at the table is obviously paramount. But we need to do more and... Sorry, but again. Prioritizing ICWA and kinship guardians in the ad hoc committee would be a priority that we want to recommend and encourage. And also to examine any systemic bias in the system that may be contributing to the higher rates of Native children in the foster system and being reported to FCS. First Five also provides trainings around foster youth and ICWA. We recently had Justice Thorne, who is a local... He was local from the Pomelo Reservation Rancheria and he spoke about the importance of ICWA and the changes that he would recommend. It was really very powerful and I only have a minute and a half to share. So we plan on bringing him back to the community and would encourage anyone in social services and within the county to attend his trainings. We also had Kevin Campbell, who is the author of Family Finding Initiatives. And he came to Ukiah to share about a San Diego program that really was instrumental in decreasing the number of Native children going into foster care. It was, you know, something like 90% fewer cases. So he is going to be visiting again as well and we're reaching out to learn more about that program. Yeah, I think that may be all of our main points. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Now's the time to come forward. And seeing none, and I have no hands raised... Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a hand raised online from First Five Mendocino.
Good morning. Can you hear me all okay?
Yes, could you please say your name for the record?
Absolutely, yes. My name is Townley Saye and I'm the executive director for First Five Mendocino. And I just wanted to kind of further stretch and explain a little bit more of what Alex was presenting on regarding some of the trainings that we offer and the importance of having Native American representation in any ad hoc meeting that this board is planning on putting together and how we would like to be of assistance in either recruitment or engaging those members for the ad hoc meeting. And just to really strengthen the point that First Five is well-suited to provide supportive services to FCS during this time regarding transforming or reforming our system from the foster care system more to a kinship-first placement, which would really address a lot of the different recommendations and findings in this grand jury report, especially those out-of-county placements that further cause a lot of stress on the already short-staffed staff over there. So I just wanted to just kind of deepen that and just to really be of assistance to how we can be in partnership with this transformation. That's all. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to bring it back to the board supervisor, Hashak.
Well, we're looking at an ad hoc to respond to the grand jury and look at what their recommendations are and do that response. So I would certainly volunteer.
Thank you. Are there any other board members that wish volunteer? Supervisor McGordy? I'll be did it.
Got it. So not volunteering myself, but I feel that the chair often is in a good position when we have these ad hocs to bond. I've been spending all my time on the How Unified School to support the chair usually bonded. The council. You.
Okay, I'm happy to work with Supervisor Hashak to work on a response to the grand jury. Supervisor Hashak, do you think it would be productive to have two members of the board or were you wanting to work on it by yourself?
No, I think the normal process has been we've had ad hoc of two.
Okay, I've done several grand jury reports since I've been on the board by myself. So I'm happy to help and support you. And yeah, that'd be fine with me. So I'm happy to accept that nomination. I guess I just need a motion for the ad hoc.
I make a motion for an ad hoc of two consisting of Supervisor Hashak and Chair Mulhern to address the grand jury report.
Second.
Okay, with that, we'll vote by the button.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And for any members of the public that are interested in that, we will be doing some outreach and incorporating feedback. So thank you very much for coming today. We are now going to move on to item three C, discussion of possible action, including adoption of a resolution approving a master tax sharing agreement between the county of Mendocino, the city of Fort Bragg, the city of Point Arena, the city of Ukiah, and the city of Willets. And in your board packet were several documents, including an agreement and key terms, as well as a resolution for this item. The agenda summary contains historical references for how long this conversation has been occurring. Supervisor Jardy and I have been on an ad hoc, I think, for at least 18 months and maybe a little bit longer than that and working with representatives from the four cities to come to the agreement that we have here today. It is meant to provide a balance and equitable share for transition processes for annexation. So this is meant for all four cities and the county to have a united agreement that creates balance when we do an annexation. And Supervisor Jardy, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a risk involved when a city proposes an annexation. There's risk involved for the county in the loss of some prospective tax increment. And I think the intent of this agreement was to, as close as possible, equalize that risk for both parties. So that both parties are going into it eyes wide open and they, but they also know what the tax share agreement is universally ahead of time. So it makes it easier, I think, hopefully, for the cities to plan and propose annexations that seem appropriate to the city and to the communities that they serve.
Thank you. And Mr. John Bakker assisted us from the legal side. Did you want to add any comments?
Sure, I'll just make some comments and just sort of lay the foundational groundwork for this. Basically, the cities cannot proceed with annexations unless the county agrees to a property tax exchange agreement. So the cities approach the county with a proposal that would allow for master property tax exchange agreements to build the framework for future annexations. And the gist of it is to share a portion of the revenue that the cities would otherwise get with the counties for a period of time. And it just sort of, over time, if there's growth, the cities would get a portion of the revenue. But the county will basically be kept whole initially while the property tax grows as a result of development in the area. That's sort of the principle that they work from. They also agreed to share a portion of the sales tax revenue that they would otherwise be entitled to over a period of time and that fades out over, I can't remember, it's a 15-year period for sales tax and a five-year period for hotel tax or transient occupancy tax. So that's the basic framework. It's designed to be an economic development tool to encourage development in the cities where there's a thought that it would be more likely. I just want to also point out there's a balancing provision that's designed to protect the county in both Fort Bragg and Ukiah so that there... It protects against a scenario where the cities annex only the more lucrative areas around the cities that the county relies on. If they do annex the lucrative areas, they also have to annex the less lucrative areas as a way to sort of balance the annexations. That's what we spent most of the time negotiating is trying to figure out. Well, what about these areas in Ukiah that are fairly lucrative for the county? If we lose those, that would be fiscally painful. And we worked through that by adding the balancing where the cities to annex a corresponding amount and less lucrative area. So I think that's all I want to say. Happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Do any board members have questions? Supervisor Hashak?
Well, when you talk about, you know, losing taxes in some areas and then taking on some, balancing it, but taking on some other areas, have there been like an analysis done about that? Like how much we would lose? And how much we would gain? And where those savings would be for the county?
We don't have, we don't have specific annexation proposals in front of us. I think we did do some analysis. We know how much tax revenue is generated in a particular geography. So we can look at it and say, oh, the northern area of Ukiah generates relatively high amount of revenue related to the amount of services that county has to provide. And then the area south doesn't generate a lot of revenue and the county ends up providing a lot of services there. So those tend to wash. If the city were to annex the north and the south, it would basically wash out and the county wouldn't be fiscally harmed. It's eyeballed to some extent. I mean, we can look at the numbers and, you know, we know how much sheriff costs are relative to, in those different locations and what kind of revenues the geographies represent. But what we don't have is a specific annexation to look at or compare.
So if we lost the sale, like looking at North Ukiah, we would lose a lot of sales tax in that area, right?
Correct. You would keep some, but you would lose some to the city. The city would get a portion of the sales tax.
Like my understanding is that 14 out of the 25 top sales tax generators is in that area. Is that correct?
I don't have that information, but I believe it is a substantial number of the sales tax revenues that are generated in the county are generated in that area.
So if the county eventually loses that revenue, I guess my question for, you're saying that the sheriff would have, it would be less of an impact for law enforcement. But the county is still responsible for, you know, mental health.
Correct.
Social services, you know, all those other things. And I guess I see some undersheriff here is that would that be a savings for the sheriff's department or office? If we went, you know, if we didn't have to provide those services in that area? I'm just trying to figure out where those services, where that savings is coming from. For the loss of revenue.
I can say that we met with the sheriff. We met with DOT. We met with planning and building. We met with auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector. I might be forgetting another department that we met with to talk about what this might look like and what those impacts might be. Because every city in Mendocino County, I think, maybe with the exception of Point Arena, has a specific sales tax, for instance, for public safety. Their ability to provide those services in a more dense geographical region is possible through those sales tax measures in a way that it's not possible with the sheriff. So again, I think like Mr. Bakker was saying, what we have before us is a master tax sharing agreement with the balancing to make sure that everybody is kept whole, as you will. And we don't have a specific annexation. But that's why in your agenda packet, because of the balancing that would need to happen in the city of Fort Bragg and the city of Ukiah, it shows the portion, for instance, to the north end of Ukiah and then the south end where specifically roads and the sheriff's office would have less obligation to provide services. And that would be a reduction in those services.
So I guess my question for the sheriff's office is, do you see savings from this plan? If this were to take place, would there be less demand on law enforcement? We're still going to have to put people in jail and everything?
Yes, the demand will still be the same, but we're going to refocus from certain areas that they would like to annex. We're going to refocus and start looking at Potter Valley, making my deputies available for other areas that are being neglected right now because we're having to concentrate our effort on certain areas that they would like to annex.
So financially, there wouldn't be a savings?
No, the two deputies I have on shift right now will stay the two deputies on shift right now. They would be able to handle more calls in other areas because the areas that they would like to annex are a high call volume.
So I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, that if we lose this sales tax, we're not going to get any savings from sheriff office?
No, sir.
We're not going to get any savings from social services, probably?
I can't answer to that, but I would think not.
Probably not from mental health either.
Right.
I'm just trying to see where the county's financial, because we aren't in great financial shape.
Right, and this will increase for the area we're talking here in Ukiah. This will increase the services needed by Ukiah Police Department because they're going to be required to police this new city limit area that used to be ours.
Right.
And because, you know, we won't be coming in with our resources to police the city limit area.
Yeah, I'm just looking at if we lose this revenue, whether it's property taxes or sales taxes or TOT, where we're going to, how we're going to recoup that.
Yes.
I don't...
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
I had Supervisor McGordy and Supervisor Williams, but I wanted to make sure, was your question specifically for the undersheriff or for?
It was for a follow-up to Supervisor Hashak.
Okay, thank you. So Supervisor McGordy.
So my overall thoughts on this as someone who's both a resident once of Ukiah, 13 years as well, somebody who lives now way away, is that the city boundaries of Ukiah have never made any sense to me. And I know that a lot of the city of Ukiah should have been annexed a long time ago, but I know that it was things like this that stopped the city from annexing. So I guess, so I'm in favor of that. I think the city is in a better position to take care of things like roads, possibly even some of the police responses, nature of how their forces organize, although that's not saying anything bad about the sheriff. I just know that the sheriff is spread really thin and trying to cover the whole county with the limited staff that we have is difficult. The question I have for our CEO is that what's the financial impact? I know this is going to be set over a period of years, but what do you see happening to finances of the county and our treasury when this is implemented?
If I may, through the chair?
Yes, please do.
So to what Attorney Bakker mentioned, we don't have an annexation in front of us. The original, some of the original documents 18 months ago or so, we're looking at the whole sphere of influence for the city of Ukiah. And that could be very damaging to the county as far as sales tax and those shares. But I think we've worked into the agreement, a split and a sharing, so there's a share. So it's not like we lose it instantly, we lose it over time. But to undersheriff Magnum's point, I don't know where the savings would come from in the county budget because it does not reduce sheriff or public safety. You know, DA still has all the cases, PD, AD. Those areas are still be hit as well as social services, public health and mental health are still county responsibilities.
So I heard that 14 of the top 25 tax generators are...
Sales tax.
Sales tax generators.
Isn't your HDL reports that you receive?
Okay, so the impact of that over time would obviously have a big impact on our sales tax income?
Yes, and again, when we looked at this, it was the North Ukiah, I believe it was, say from Rayleigh's down to the Forks, if I remember correctly. And again, 14 of the 25 are there. And it's looking at about $3 million hit if they were all to go at one time with no splitting or sharing.
So there's a real trade-off. I think the fact that we're trying to balance out that city of Ukiah takes on everything, not just the cherry on top of the whatever. So I think if they're taking everything, that starts to make a lot more equity. And we look at where the city is likely to expand, which is to the south, it's in the right direction from of tax sharing agreements and more importantly, where we're likely to annex. So in the end, I think this is probably a very good idea.
I think that was, so that it balanced out.
Supervisor William?
I'm in favor of property owners having the right to be in a city. Cities provide a lot better services. I know that because people call me from the unincorporated right outside of city limits and ask, why aren't we getting blank? This is a routine conversation and it's because you're not in the city. And they ask, how do I get in the city? So I'm not against it conceptually. Financially, I think it's a huge loss for the county and that we're going to need to plan for that. I don't see, like Supervisor Hashak pointed out, I don't see the balancing. You're going to lose the sale significant, sales tax and you're not going to make up for it in a decrease of services. So I don't know what my position is. I have an open mind at this point. I think it's right to let people be in incorporated cities. In fact, over the several years, I've had constituents bring me to meetings where they're talking about incorporating large parts of the 5th District because they want local control, arguing they're not getting services from the county in some places. I mean, I'll take you out there. They're not getting anything, not even potholes filled. They have nothing to show. And with the revenue neutrality from legislature around 1992, I think it's really hard to incorporate a city, especially a small town in Mendocino County. I don't know that it's viable, but you certainly have people asking the question regularly because they're seeing services inside of city limits are much better than the unincorporated.
Thank you, and I would just say that I looked it up. It hasn't been 18 months, it's been three years since May of 2021, that we've been having this conversation. And a lot of the conversations did really revolve around what does this financially look like for the county, which is why it has the lengthy process for the sales tax to transfer so that economic development can build up in between those years. I'd like to go to Supervisor Hashak and then open it up to the public because we have some members of the city of Ukiah that are here that participated in the ad hoc discussions and I think it would be useful to hear from them as well.
Well, one of the conversations I had was with interim auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, Sarah Pierce. And it turns out that to do this, it's going to require a lot of manual labor from the auditor's office because it doesn't fit into the Almentum software. So I was just wondering if it's going to require extra workers or how are you going to handle this? What the cost would be to the county?
Good morning, Board Supervisor, CEO, Antle. Sarah Pierce, acting auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector. Supervisor Hashak is correct. The current agreement, as it stands right now, will not work within the Almentum system because it's an if-this, then-that kind of scenario. So we would have to be taking all of the calculations outside of the property tax system and manually calculating them in Excel and then overriding the distribution factors within Almentum. I have been working with the cities to try to solidify an Excel file that will track this, but it will be tracked indefinitely. And I've only been able to work through the first annexation example, one TRA, and it's very complex. And the likelihood of an annexation having more than one TRA is likely. And then the minute you put another annexation on top of it, it will be very complex. And I honestly can't wrap my head around what that's going to look like right now. But it will be an increased cost to the auditor's office, whether it be staffing or working with Almentum or a property consultant to try to get the system to function properly. We know from Almentum it is not possible.
So at this point, you'd have to have another staff person to deal with this?
It's hard to say right now what the impact would be because there's not an annexation proposal on the table. So we don't know if it's... annexation proposal on the table. So we don't know if it's going to be, you know, one TRA or five TRAs. But it will be an increased tracking, which leaves room, you know, for errors and stuff like that. But it will be an increased cost at some point.
And have you been able to run any scenarios, like different areas and what the loss in sales tax or TOT, property tax would be?
Um, no, not really, because I don't know what the proposed annexation would be. There's not one on the table, so it's hard to tell what the impact would be. I did take one TRA that I thought would be within the annexation at one point and just calculated the, the factors that are in the agreement to make sure that it worked through right. But I can't tell you what the impact is because I, once again, I don't know if that TRA would be included or not. It was just all hypothetical.
Okay, so at this point, you don't really have the staff to deal with it?
No, it would be myself and Darlene that's in the auditor's office manually tracking this outside of the system.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And just another question for Mr. Barker, is that there's other counties that do these kind of tax agreements, right?
Yes, there are.
Do, are we matching what they're doing in other counties?
No, I think that, I, I would say just my judgment based on having looked at a number of them. This one is more generous to the county than you see in some other, some other places because of the sharing of the sales tax and the sharing of the hotel tax over a period of time. That, that's not typical. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Williams?
Are there any, I looked at the attachments, but I didn't see a long-term range financial forecast. Is there a projected expenses and revenue 10 years out, 20 years out? And I know it's hard to say without a specific annexation on the table. Maybe look at best case and pessimistic case. Best case is there's no annexations as far as the county's budget is concerned. Imagine there will be some, right? Can we estimate what, can we project what we think those might be and look 20 years out at how it affects the county? The reason I raise it is today, the county has revenue increasing at a slower pace than expenses. The cost of doing business is increasing every year, more than the additional revenue we're bringing in. So, you know, if you told the local business, you're going to have that situation for the next 20 years, they're going to be bankrupt in 20 years. It's not sustainable. And so the county is already in that position. Now you take more revenue off the table, where does that leave us? And I think that's what Supervisor Hashcheck was getting at. So the question is, are there financial forecasts looking a couple decades out?
Supervisor Jordy?
So I, I do think we probably should just hear from some of the audience people here. But, um, so I, I think the discussions initially were along that track. You know, let's work through an example. The problem is that it's, it's just kind of problematic to, for a number of reasons, to actually game that out. Because, for example, there's no way to know that after a piece of property or an area gets annexed, how quickly will private money go into redeveloping that site? There are so many things beyond the control of a city or a county or anybody to expedite that. I mean, the, a city could do everything they could to try to incentivize, talk to developers, try to convince them to proceed with development. Even if they get the permits, maybe, maybe the financial world changes to the point where, you know, they can't get construction loans or, so I think that's where the conversation shifted from trying to pencil out a specific example and instead look at two things. One was looking at this phase, phase out of, of county revenues from the sales tax, so it wasn't an immediate drop, recognizing that the cities have two half cent sales taxes that they get that the county doesn't get. So they're already getting from day one, they're going to get the half cent, in the case of Ukiah, public safety half cent for the general fund, half a cent for the roads. So they can kind of take that risk because they're going to get that extra half a cent or extra one cent. And then, and then the other was if, if we looked at areas that were high revenue generation, Ukiah, north of Ukiah, and areas that are not high revenue generation but do have streets to maintain and other costs to the county. So we have focused a fair amount here on today's discussion on sheriff patrol services. You know, it, it may be that there won't be a reduction in sheriff patrol, maybe there will, you know. I think that's for a future discussion by a future board. But I think, but, but there will be a reduction in the number of county roads to be maintained. And so there's, there's some allowance for the county road department to work, focus on other roads, to redirect state dollars that the county receives to other roads. So again, I think in the end, the idea here was, this was, and as John said, it's, it's probably more favorable than other tax share agreements he's seen in, in terms of for the county, because the other, not all tax share agreements also share sales tax and share hotel tax. This one does for a time, a period of time. And, but then really focuses on geographic balancing. So it's rather than trying to nail down, will this actually pencil out favorably to the county or not, because there's just too many variables that are beyond the control of anybody. Principally have to do with how quickly does private development occur? Just, it's not something a city or a county can control.
Supervisor Hashcheck, a question?
Yeah, just a question. If we didn't have this master tax sharing agreement and we just went to, towards specific projects, you know, is that a possibility? Because, you know, I can see that the Ukiah situation is very complex. The Willett's situation is pretty straightforward where they're not dealing with sales taxes, TOT and all that, you know, where it'd be residential. So, so could individual cities just make agreements outside of this master tax sharing agreement?
Yes, yes. I, I mean, that's the point of this, is to avoid the need to do that on an ad hoc basis. The way it works under the LAFCO law is that a city can, can apply for an annexation, and it doesn't go anywhere unless they reach an agreement with the county on a property tax exchange. So there's a 60-day period where the city and the county are supposed to be negotiating and trying to reach an agreement. So in the absence of this master agreement, they would be done on an ad hoc basis each time the city proposed an annexation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any additional pins, so I just like to open this up to public comment. And if anybody would like to come forward to comment on this item and towards session or answer any questions, please feel free to come forward.
Mari Roden, Ukiah City Council. And I wasn't part of the negotiations. I prepared a, some remarks, but I want to respond to the concerns, first of all, that you are expressing about losing money. And I feel like that's kind of a, a narrow focus. I mean, if I were you, I, I would be concerned about that. But in the bigger picture, this is about economic growth. And that, that because the county, I'm, I'm thinking of Ukiah in this case, because the city hasn't been allowed to annex and because of an absence of such a tax agreement, we've sort of had stagnation in our economic, in growth. So it's true that the county will, will in very small increments over a 15-year period begin to lose, lose, lose tax revenue. But that's only happening as economic growth happens. So you have to keep in mind that revenue, property tax, the idea anyway, is that property tax, property values will rise, so property taxes will rise, and it's going to raise the boat of all of us. So it's, it's really all of us working together for the, for the benefit of our entire county because we're all gonna, we're all gonna benefit as a result of this. I guess I have a little bit of time. So that, that's what I, I hope that I've gotten my point across. It, it, please don't conceive of it as simply a loss to you all, to the county. I wanted to say that that's really, this is a watershed moment. It's amazing, there's no, there's no press here, the halls aren't packed because this, the issue of having a tax sharing agreement to kind of open the doors to annexations has been an issue for decades. And so, I mean, you, you know, you're, you're really on the brink of, of something really special and, and forward-thinking for, for our county. You know, it's gonna, that, this tax sharing agreement combined with annexations is going to allow right sizing. And I, I mean that literally and, you know, figuratively, literally in, in terms of geographically, our cities may grow. And figuratively, you know, financially, we're all going to grow as a result. And correcting the current imbalance, let's see, correcting the imbalance that currently exists wherein the county's incentives around growth act at cross purposes with what constituents have been saying they want, which is housing and commercial development concentrated in urban centers and not sprawling out. And it's also what's right for a sustainable future. And the status quo is taxing our cities, as you know, because we're stretching thin as we're impacted by providing services to people who aren't our residents. And it's also stretching the county financially. For example, the sheriff's department having to respond to calls that are really within an urban area when they are really supposed to be responding to areas like Potter Valley that don't, don't have public safety services. So my time's running out. I just want to thank you for considering this. I hope you'll support this really important agreement with cities by supporting and creating the conditions. That's really what this is about. This agreement creates the conditions for economic flourishing that our county so desperately needs and that we'll all benefit from over time.
Thank you. I think Supervisor Williams has a question.
Yeah, I, I can see people inside of the city benefiting from the flourishing. But how do people outside of the cities that rely on that tax base today benefit?
Well, as we, you know, you're, the county is going to be getting a, a share of the increment. So as we grow, you know, you're, you're getting it too.
Have you seen any forecasts on what, so we could, or we could look at whether that'll balance in the years?
I haven't, I haven't been in the, I haven't.
I, I, so I, I, I support the concept you're bringing up. I want to believe it. But it's, it's hard without seeing a forecast to know, will the county, I don't want to have to tell public safety in a few years, we're giving you cuts because you're the, public safety is the bulk of our general fund, and our general fund is declining. What, what do I say to those people who have that concern?
Yeah, I, I don't have a forecast. But what you can say to your constituents in remote areas is that we're going to have better services available. Our, our sheriff will have more time to serve your area, to respond to Covelo, to Potter Valley, to Hopland, the places that, you know, are getting short shrift right now because they're having to respond to South Ukiah or North Ukiah or wherever, that are, that really ought to be the responsibility of city. But I, I mean, I do, I do hear a question. I just say too that this is not a unique agreement, that cities and counties have these tax sharing agreements to allow annexations. We are unique because we don't have it. So, you know, if it weren't working, I think we wouldn't see them all over the state. Sorry, I can't provide you more specifics.
I, I appreciate the answers.
Yeah.
I, I just, I would like to have more public comment. I just want to share with Supervisor Williams. So for, I, I could use an apartment as an example, as one of the conversations that we had. There's an apartment building just right outside the city limits on Brush Street. And the sheriff's office had 260 calls and about $180 per call, that's about $45,000 just for one apartment complex. And so while the sheriff would likely not lose staff, they would have more opportunities to serve a further outreach instead of investing so much time so close to the urban limit.
Yeah, I, so I, I understand that concept and I, I support it. My concern is the loss of revenue. I know the sheriff's office will be available to respond to area, other areas outside of the urban environment, but they're going to have less revenue to do it with. So I would think that's fewer personnel. So how do you, how do you argue that there's a balance here? It looks like a financial loss to county services.
The increase in the property tax assessments and.
But we don't have a, we don't have a forecast on that, right?
Free economic development.
That's, that's, it's a theory, but we don't have any sort of forecast on it today. So I mean, that's, that's where I'm probably in abstain frankly, because not enough information here. I want to tell the people that would, on the edge of a city that would like to be in a city, yes, you have the right and the city has the right to annex you. But I think the county needs to be in a position to at least plan for the loss of finances because a few years out, this board will be discussing what to do with less money. And our general fund basically pays for public protection. It'll be public protection that gets cut.
Thank you for that. I do want to continue the public comment. If there are members of the public that wish to come forward, if you could please form a line and be prepared, it helps the meeting process. Good morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, CEO Antle, Jesse Davis, Chief Planning Manager, City of Ukiah. I've participated in many of these ad hoc conversations, and I have some notes here that I'm able to discuss and talk through, but I'm also happy to answer any questions that you may have. I think that it's important to recognize that annexations are a case-by-case basis and not all annexations are the same. Prior to 1988, the city of, the city of Ukiah had undertaken a number of annexations. From 1988 to 2022, not a single annexation was completed by the city of Ukiah. And that's partly because of the lack of a master tax share agreement. Yes, cities are able to negotiate on an ad hoc or a case-by-case basis for annexation, but as illustrated by the city of Ukiah, from 1988 to 2022, no annexation has taken place. I think it's important to look at this agreement as something that creates growth and industry. And without undertaking this, you're leaving growth and industry on the table, especially in areas like Ukiah where a number of areas are, could be potentially unlocked by the tools that a master tax share agreement allows us to utilize. The Brush Street Triangle, for example, the Masonite sites. All of these areas require not only the city's infrastructure, but also the city's ability to provide services. The growth that occurs through this annex, this master tax share agreement is going, is partly focused on those areas. But it's also good for the county in the sense that it allows you to focus on your core competencies. I would argue that I do believe savings can be engendered, not only through the Department of Transportation, but also through the Mendocino County Sheriff's Office. That's in part because a reduced call volume produces the overtime. Your core competencies as a rural county on transportation are not on major arterials with complicated signalization. It's on rural roads that require those potholes to be fixed. Savings will occur, and it's hard to forecast that, as we've all illustrated and discussed, because every annexation is different. There will be annexations that will involve commercial areas. There will be annexations that do not involve any commercial areas. So, and then also thinking about your auditor tax controller. This is another area where the muscle memory doesn't exist. Again, Ukiah's last annexation prior to the city-owned annexation that we facilitated was in 1988. The, the muscle memory that comes with undertaking these types of activities, these types of reviews, will increase and become more efficient over time. And not every annexation is the same, as I, as I was iterating, because there will be annexations that unlock growth, there will be annexations that allow for services to be provided. So it's important to recognize that they're all very unique. We do have one annexation on the table right now that we're using as a vehicle. That's the Western Hills Annexation, primarily focused on limited residential development, but also the preservation of public open space. The thing I'll leave you with as a former county employee and being in that ad hoc was the focus on housing. This is another aspect of this agreement that I think is being overlooked and hasn't been discussed. This agreement is not only a tax sharing agreement, it's also a housing agreement that recognizes that growth and housing development is best undertaken in incorporated areas. The structures, the trade-offs that are made through the housing agreements that this agreement contains will allow us to focus housing where it is best and can be served by infrastructure. I have a, no more time, but I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Supervisor McGordy?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment on that. So a couple interesting things, and we should take a look demographically at what's going on with Mendocino County. There's two issues. One, it was interesting during the expansion of the cannabis industry when people wanted, I talked to, wanted to come to Ukiah Valley, and I asked, why? Do you already have operations in Leightonville? And they said, we want to live in Ukiah. We want to live in a place where there are services that are not, that we don't have here, whether it's a more reliable power, sewer, parks, better schools. So there's a real draw to this area for, for people to live in. And our, our biggest limitation right now is housing. And it's pretty clear the county doesn't do well with trying to provide the infrastructure for dense housing. We're okay with stuff that's sort of scattered on larger parcels, but that's an issue. Secondly, we're, we're seeing issues with getting fire insurance, which I think is really going to change the dynamics of how we build in the outer parts of our county. It'll be much easier for people to insure their homes if they're in town, incorporated area. And, and thirdly is just that we're, we're seeing older people who live in larger parcels, even in places like the East Hills, wanting to come into town and downsize and be in a, a more kind of cozy and easy to manage sort of parcel. So this is all related. And, and I'm, I'm thinking about that. I, $3 million, yes, that's a lot of money to our, our, our sales income. But the trade-off of, of what we do for the people of Mendocino County by, by having the ability to expand our, our urban centers, I think is more than balanced by that.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
And that would be. And that would be $3 million over a span of 15 years because it has a tiered process. So there's time for the growth to happen in the sales tax change. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Good morning. Sage San Jacomo, City Manager for the City of Ukiah. I've been involved with this discussion for two decades now. And I will say that I think this is, out of those 20 years, the best agreement that we've come up with. I think it's actually one of the best agreements in the state. And you heard, you know, special counsel indicate that this is favorable to the county, but it's actually favorable to Mendocino County. This is a cooperative agreement. This is our first real milestone in Mendocino County of major cooperation for housing, for economic development, for doing the things that cities do well and the things that counties do well. Right now, we're playing outside of our lanes. You know, you have the county trying to provide municipal level services in growing areas that are sprawling outside of city limits and really Fort Bragg and Ukiah, I mean, Fort Bragg and Willets are probably just two decades behind where Ukiah is today. And, you know, you look at what their direction is going and Supervisor Williams, I appreciate the direction is your costs are outpacing your revenue. That's not going to change if you keep with the status quo. And that's what you're going to, frankly, you're discussing today, you know, yesterday, what are you doing with less money? The fact that there's two deputies in the Ukiah Valley surrounding Ukiah responsive to phone calls at any given time, I would say you already made the cuts. You are already going in the wrong direction. This agreement shifts us into the right direction. It allows the county to focuses, focus on the services that they do well. Health and human services, environmental services, rural planning, you know, all of those things that are very important for cities in our county too, because we need a strong county in order to have strong cities and we need to have strong cities in order to have a strong county. This is the tool that is missing. Sonoma County has this tool. It's been in place for decades. What I can tell you is from property tax, you don't lose anything unless there's growth. So there's no loss there. That's very simple in the formula, straight out of the gate. And so it is based upon, you know, where we do want to see good growth, responsible growth with the right services in place to sustain that growth. So we don't only increase property tax and increase the overall pie for property tax that's coming into the cities and the counties, but we also increase sales tax and we increase TOT. And so there's a good portion of sales tax within city limits currently today and into the future that goes to dedicated services that the county has to provide. And if you're not pulling in those sales tax numbers to provide the services you need, you're having to backfill with your property taxes to do that or not do it. This puts us on the right trajectory, the right philosophy, the right level of cooperation that's needed to see both our cities and the counties grow successfully, which I would argue today, and I've argued for, I mean, we've seen it. I've seen it as city manager and I've been with the city, not a city manager, I've been city manager now for nine years, but with the city for 25. Mendocino County is not today what it used to be. If we had this tool in place, I believe we would have been in a very, much, much stronger position than where we are today. And so that you will be able to say, what resources do I need in order to be able to serve from the sheriff's perspective for these rural communities? I would argue that the deferred infrastructure in these areas that need to be annexed far exceeds $3 million, even if you lost that at one point in time. I mean, one road project, and you know, the city's doing a lot of road projects, is tremendously expensive, not to mention the deferred infrastructure under the ground of water, sewer, you know, electricity. All of those things are where cities are able to perform probably better than the county because it's within our lanes. And there's certainly lots of examples where cities can't perform as well as the county. This helps us cooperate within our lanes for the success of our county. And with that, I'll stop and answer any questions.
Supervisor Williams and Supervisor Jordy.
What do you think an example is of the county performing better than the city?
Yeah, I mean, health and human services, straight out of the gate.
But that's, the county does it and the city doesn't, right? What, what do both do that the county does better?
Well, I mean, that's the thing, that for municipal level services, cities should be providing those.
Okay, we agree.
Right. And so counties shouldn't have to provide that. And so I think that there's a lot of things that we've done cooperatively together that, you know, that we've normalized through cooperation over time. I think we have a better solid waste contract. We have a better mendow recycle, you know, cooperative partnership together. Where we do see failure, and we're going to see more failure, is on our special district sides, which are going to impact counties. Had the City of Ukiah, for example, not stepped up with the Ukiah Valley Fire District and formed that partnership, I mean, at the time that we formed that partnership on the north and south end of town, you had one staff person per engine at each station at any given time. That is failure altogether. And we see water districts, you know, who are suffering and that infrastructure suffering because you simply can't have 22 fire agencies and 22 water districts in a rural county, right, with overhead and everything doing what we're doing. We need to work towards these cooperative agreements and look towards the partnerships. This agreement sets that foundation and it prevents the cherry picking that we talked about. You know, I, I've argued in the tax sharing agreement discussions, north of town's not that all that great. In fact, it's going to cost us more to provide services in that area than what we're going to be able to even get, even if we got it all at one period of time. You know, there's a number of disadvantaged communities that are within these areas that are completely underserved, lack sidewalks, lack streets, lack proper policing, lack park, you know, and lack park infrastructure, all things that improve not only quality of life and our residents deserve, but improve the economics, improve property tax, you know, improve sales tax, improve jobs hopefully, encourage, you know, companies wanting to expand in our community, you know, and grow in our community rather than start here and then leave.
Did you have a follow-up?
No, I'm just in agreement.
Okay, Supervisor Jordy, did you have a?
Yeah, just briefly. So one of the things that the city manager you brought up was something that I heard for the first time in these conversations and so maybe you could elaborate on it and/or Mr. Baker could elaborate on it. I had prior to these discussions never heard that counties receive a portion of sales tax that's generated within a city. And maybe you could go into greater detail on that because it's not something we typically hear about. So I think it had to do with social service funding or it was some funding that the state allocates to counties. It's not money that shows up in, there's the 1% sales tax, Bradley Burns, that everybody normally talks about. And that goes to the jurisdiction where the business is located, county or city. But there's, there's other state sales tax that's within, and I believe, go into more detail on that.
There is a portion of the sales tax that was directed to counties for social services under the 1991 realignment. It's for local health and social services programs. I'm not sure exactly how the state distributes it, but it's probably based on need at the county levels.
We've, we've had a presentation from Deputy CEO Tony Rakes about the 91 and 2011 realignment. So I believe that's what Supervisor Jordy's referring to. That sales tax is not included in the 1% that will be part of this tax sharing agreement. That 91 and 211 realignment dollars for social services and behavioral health will remain with the county to do those services.
Correct.
And 172?
172 would remain the way that it is, is currently outlined.
Okay.
Yeah.
The counties get the majority of 172. I mean, altogether, 172 that comes into the City of Ukiah is about $60,000 a year compared, I think, to the seven or eight million that comes into the county.
Chair, I think another positive is City of Ukiah has been very successful with grants, far more than the county. I think even City of Fort Bragg brings in more than the entire county of Mendocino. And I imagine that trend will continue. So when you look at, somebody has to pay for infrastructure and services, it seems like under the city umbrella, there's more dollars per capita flowing in.
Yeah, and I don't know if Supervisor Jordy is best to address this or City Manager San Jacomo, but this is, so again, we appreciate your patience here. I appreciate your patience with my colleagues because this conversation took place over three years. And so there was a lot of conversation that we had gone over that, you know, we tried to articulate in a brief agenda summary, which is a little bit hard, but part of the cities each having their own specific sales tax means that they are able to access more state gas tax dollars because of the sort of self-help jurisdictions. So they, they are able to draw down not only more grant dollars, but more gas tax dollars because of that, that the county is not, because we don't have a roads tax. And so I don't know if that's best for an MCAG member or a city manager, San Jacomo, but you were going to talk about the grants that the city.
Yeah, again, I think that we get grants that are well within our lane. Infrastructure, you know, is really within our lane and for the services that we provide. But the county's been quite successful in grants in their lane too, with the services that they provide. And so again, having the focus in the lanes, but working cooperatively under this foundation, this is the missing piece. This is the missing link that is going to, in my opinion, really push Mendocino County forward and set us up for success as opposed to the status quo, which I frankly think it's a really bleak picture for all of us, not just the county, and I know you've been discussing it, but for cities as well. And it's just the wrong direction. You know, I want to appreciate that this has been going on for an extended period. Some are hearing it kind of for the first time, as Supervisor Mulhern said. The county was well represented at the table with specialty counsel who brought in a tremendous amount of knowledge. It was a cooperative effort at the table, you know, when we're sitting there and we're playing through all of these different types of scenarios or how to best set this up for success. And frankly, what you, what I think is really unique about this agreement is I haven't seen where, especially on the property tax side, because that's all that's called for, for annexation, is a property tax agreement, not a sales tax or a TOT agreement. But for property tax is that we all win when there's growth. Nobody loses on that side of it. And then just one other point, TOT. You know, TOT, the transitions over a five-year period of time, I talked about sales tax and the infrastructure deferments and stuff. Our TOT facilities outside of city limits lack the services they need to be successful. There's one to the north of town that had 1,400 public safety service calls in one year. We literally probably should have just put a firefighter and a deputy and a police officer at that one single establishment because that's basically where they were the entire year. And so, you know, that to me, again, the wrong direction, the costs associated with that, certainly better to be able to right-size resources, redirect resources within the lanes that we all play and grow together.
Supervisor McGordy, do you have a question or comment? You got it.
Okay. So a comment on the one area that I work a lot in, which is water. And if we look at what's happened in the almost four years that I've been on the board, all the bright spots in water development and security are inside of incorporated areas because they have dedicated staff, something we don't have. We struggle with it because we have a budget of $150,000 for our water agency, whereas if you look at the amount of money that the City of Ukiah has brought in, approaching $50 million now for a purple pipe program and now with the, the new Ukiah Valley Water Authority, is that what we're calling it? So there's a consolidation of services. The county could never get that together. This is something that the City of Ukiah has provided amazing leadership on, which again, they will get a substantial grant for. So City of Fort Bragg, same thing. They've brought in millions to upgrade both their water storage system, their water treatment system and replacing sewer pipes. We just simply don't have capacity to do that. And that becomes the quality of life then for our citizens, which is going to go beyond city limits as they exist today.
Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, so you're kind of winning me over. I think there's two, is that unbelievable? I, I think there's, there's really two tracks here for me. One is this proposal, it's a good proposal. It's a, it's a, it's a win for county in various ways. The other is our county's finances are non-viable in the long term. And I want to try to separate those too, because I don't think this one is really intertwined with it. It's just, it's just bringing up the issue of we're, we don't have a, we have a bleak future. Would it be possible for that to come back as a separate item? Because I think the public will see this happening and it's going, just like for me, it's going to provoke, it's going to provoke the question of where does that leave the county? County's in bad shape regardless. Can we have just an agenda item for maybe hiring a firm to do a long-range forecast looking 20 years out with status quo and, you know, maybe a couple of other options? And, and begin doing some, some planning on, because I think the, we are going to have more cuts. You look at our revenue and our expenses and there's, there's no way we're not on a path for, you know, and this Board of Supervisors has the annual job of what more to cut. So if you're comfortable detaching those, I could support this plan, knowing that the other concern will, will be addressed at a different meeting.
I'm not sure that I understand what it is that you're looking for.
I'm looking for, I'm looking for a long-range financial plan for the county, assuming we approve this item today.
Okay, and, and to have that come forward at?
At a future meeting.
I'm fine with that. Supervisor Jordy is nodding his head, so it sounds like he's fine with that as well. I would like to, Supervisor McGordy.
Just a real quick comment on that. So I think that could be useful also for LAFCO as LAFCO starts to make considerations about this because that's something they have to consider in tax sharing agreements. So it's, it's overall good data if we have forecasts.
Great. Any other members of the public that wish to come forward on this item? And if you're on Zoom and wish to speak, you can use the raise hand feature on the platform or press star nine on your phone. Good morning. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Philip Williams. I'm special counsel for the City of Ukiah. I wanted to make just a few points that touched on specific questions that the supervisors raised, but first, I'm really glad that Supervisor McGordy raised the issue of water, just as a, as perhaps a lens, a helpful lens to look at this. In 2021, the State Water Board looked at Mendocino County and essentially wanted to lop everyone's head off north of Healdsburg. We were able to engage effectively with the State Water Board in getting them out of a zero-sum mentality of there not being enough water and shifting them into a paradigm where, what if we all shared the water that we had? And we were able to shift successfully from this zero-sum paradigm, very successfully into a sharing paradigm where we proved out the theory that not only was there enough water for the Ukiah Valley, but there was enough water that we were actually able to truck it over to our neighbors on the coast who needed it desperately. So the shift from the zero-sum, a false zero-sum mentality into a different theory, a different paradigm where we look at the resources we have and we find a better way to grow the pie for everybody, is a very recent example of, I think, significant success. Full transparency, I wrote that agreement, so I thought it was, I thought it was very well done. Similarly, I also helped Mr. Backer write this one. I had the pleasure of working with him on this. And I wanted to raise three points and point you all to three paragraphs in the agreement that I think address some of the questions, specific questions that were raised. And again, the approach here is the effort was and the intent here was to build an enduring agreement, right? There's no point in getting something on a piece of paper that doesn't endure for 15 years. Otherwise, what have we done? What have we accomplished? And examples of where you'll see the agreement trying to strive for endurance, you heard Ms. Pierce's valid concerns about just implementing the agreement. This was a topic of conversation over the last month. We drafted paragraph five to address that exact issue where the parties will exchange information at the request of any party to better understand how to implement the agreement. So paragraph five is specifically built into the agreement to address the concerns about implementation. From my perspective, that, that paragraph is not about, here's the answer that you must do. Here's the answer, it's show the math, do the work, sit down and work with each other so that everyone understands what the math is and that it works. So principle, that's one way of reaching endurance. As to the concerns about financial durability, right, we can't, we can only look so far. That's just the facts. We built in paragraph 12, that's dispute resolution, because we can't know exactly what the finances are going to be 10 or 15 years from now. So we built in paragraph 12, which can be triggered by any party. If any party has a concern about how the agreement is being implemented, the financial implications of that agreement, then we trigger paragraph 12. And that is a robust, objective process that the parties can go through to make sure that the agreement is actually working for everybody. If it's not, then I would point to paragraph 10, where it talks about withdrawal and termination. The county can withdraw unilaterally from this agreement if we get to a point where you have an annexation proposal in front of you and you do the math, your fat, your staff goes and does the math and it doesn't work and we can't reconcile those differences according to paragraphs five or 12, then the county can say, we're withdrawing unilaterally. So again, that is all intended to drive toward this, this intent that we are building a framework for something that's going to endure for 15 or 20, 20 years and not an attempt to like lock anyone in to a specific, to specific and unknown math today. But I thought this might be helpful, three paragraphs.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Any supervisors have questions? I'm not seeing any pins. Thank you for coming this morning. Are there any other members of the public? Please come forward.
Good morning, Chair, Board members, county staff, Eisenlokal Telly, Chief Probation Officer. I did hear the board mention that it had consulted with many of its departments, probation not being one of them. With that, I would say that both City Police and Sheriff's Office have jurisdictional boundaries, whereas the probation department does not. We work inside the cities, we work inside the counties. So, I see difficulties both with residential structures and industrial structures, both inside the city and outside. I think the issue is, Supervisor Williams points out, it's twofold. After watching yesterday's board meeting, to hear the board discuss anything that reduces county revenues would be a mistake, in my opinion. But if you separate those issues, I've also talked to this board many times about the cotton ball theory, and the county's stretched entirely too thin at this point. So, if the board is to adopt this tax share agreement, which on its face does have a lot of beneficial properties in it for the county of Mendocino, it's the question of if you're willing to then go on to annex something. Without having a full understanding of what that annexation will cost the county, I'd recommend not proceeding. You really need to understand the loss of revenues and what it would do, and then balance that into what services you're going to cut, because you will lose revenues, which means you need to cut services to offset that loss of revenues. I think the agreement does a lot of, like I mentioned, a lot of beneficial things to protect the county. I don't see that, like the city folks mentioned, in a lot of these types of agreements. So, I think there's reason to move forward with the tax share agreement. It's just the annexation that the county needs to study more in depth before agreeing to any of it. And with that, I think probation's part in this is played. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Supervisor Williams?
Yeah, I had a question. Well, I have a question for probation. Were other departments consulted? Sheriff, DOT?
So, I recall the sheriff, the DOT, and planning and building, and I would say, and forgive us, Eisen, for not including you, but I would say that that is because those are departments that would have a changed workflow because of that. So, I'll take, for instance, the conversations that Mr. Davis brought up about housing. And at that time that we had the conversation with planning and building, we were in the middle, and it hadn't quite been approved of the Bella Vista project, which could potentially become an area that is annexed in the future. If the Vineyards Crossings project moves forward after an annexation occurs, then that planning and building work would fall upon the City of Ukiah and not county planning and building, which would free up their time for other work. So, that, for me, Supervisor Jertie, feel free to chime in, that, for me, was why those specific departments were brought in to meet the sheriff, planning and building, and DOT, because within the map that you have of potential annexation, there are several projects that DOT is about to undertake. Coincidentally, it's actually in the First and Fifth District on North State Street, that would then become jurisdiction of the City of Ukiah, potentially. And that would mean that their engineering staff, their internal team that works on their projects, aside from the actual construction, which would go out to an RFP, but their internal departments would be the ones that were working on that. So, that was why probation, behavioral health, social services, all of those services are already provided within the cities. And so, that wouldn't necessarily change their workflow. Did we meet with any other departments, or is that your recollections of three? That's it, that's the, yeah. And again, the 91 realignment and the 2011 realignment would stay within the county. It's just the sales tax that would shift, and that would shift over a period of 15 years.
And I think the fear of status quo, we won't see housing, we won't see a flourishing city, right? And the property values in the unincorporated surrounding a flourishing city may balance out any short-term losses.
Yeah, that's the intention, along with the opportunity for economic development. City of Ukiah owns its own electric utility. And so, for the City of Ukiah to provide electric services outside of the city limits is a benefit to their customers. It costs less. It's more reliable. They have their own team that works, you know, directly within the area. So, I think that, as far as I've talked to members of the community that are outside of the city limits, they really would prefer to be within the city limits to receive those services. And as I said, you know, I appreciate all the, my colleagues' patience, because this is a conversation that we've had for over, for three years now. And we've kind of tried to work through the challenges. But as Mr. Williams stated, there are some out clauses that were also built in, in case, you know, we find, in the way we anticipated it would. Supervisor McGordy?
And just as an example, when the Bella Vista first was being designed, I know that Director DeShiel from DOT was suggesting that they form a homeowners association to basically take care of the roads, because you see how the county could afford to do it. So, that reinforces the idea that we're just not very good at being able to provide the kind of services that are done.
But I want to clarify, it's not our staff that's not able. It's just the structure of a large county with five supervisors representing different constituents, whereas I think the city is able to work more cohesively, just by the structure, not that our people aren't as dedicated. Did we already do public comment?
We have, I am going to call for additional public comment. I just wanted to say, and Supervisor Williams, because Bella Vista's in the Fifth District, we have talked about the City of Ukiah in particular taking on that park, because we know that the county isn't able to take on parks. And so, I think that's just an example, again, of this conversation has been, well, decades in the making, but three years since I've been on the ad hoc. And there's been so much discussed over time that fitting it all into one agenda item is a little bit challenging. But I think that that's why the master tax sharing agreement was created, as it was with that balancing and those opportunities for discussions. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on this item? If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine on your phone. And I have none, so I'm going to bring it back to the board. Supervisor Williams?
Move the recommended action.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. I have two pins up, so let's start with Supervisor Hesek.
Well, just for the process, you know, if a jurisdiction applies for this annexation, then it goes to Lafco? And Lafco either approves it or doesn't?
That's correct.
So, the county doesn't have much of a say. It's really Lafco determining whether the annexation happens.
That's correct, but the county can participate in Lafco process. Two supervisors sit on Lafco, and, you know, the Lafco members pick a public member as well. So, the county does have some political leverage in the Lafco process and can participate in it as well.
How many people are on Lafco?
Help me out. Are there five or seven in?
Seven.
Seven. So, there's two members of the Board of Supervisors, two city members, two members from the special districts, and then a public member chosen by the remaining six.
Okay. You know, I guess my issues are really, we're hearing that our auditor's office doesn't have the capacity right now to deal with these issues. And we don't know the numbers. We haven't run any scenarios. And they'll have to hire another person to do this. And so, and, you know, we can talk about economic growth and tide rising and lifting all boats. But really, the fact is, we're going to lose tax money, sales tax and TOT tax, especially if this north of Ukiah area goes in. And so, so, you know, when we talk about, like, sheriff response, is that we're going to have to cut $3 million at some point, you know, from the services we provide. And it's not going to come from the sheriff's office. It's not going to come from public safety. It's not going to come from social services. You know, where are we going to, because we have to provide those same services, except for, you know, there's these apartment complexes or motels or whatever that we won't have to respond to. But the idea is, we still have a responsibility for those areas. And I just don't see this as in the county's interest overall. I can see doing these annexations on a, you know, one-time basis, looking at the individual projects to make sure, and then run the numbers, and make sure that we're, you know, making it a balanced approach. But I don't see that happening right now. And I think that if it goes to Lafco, you know, we've got two votes, two people on Lafco, you know, one representing Ukiah area. And I don't see the counties, you know, we represent the county. And I just worry about the county having enough of a voice on Lafco to really decide whether it's in our benefit or not. And I don't see us being able to handle these issues at this point in time.
So, thank you for that. And I would just say that the, I appreciate the interim auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector having concerns, but that is really an internal county challenge. And this particular item doesn't change the fact that we need improvements with our software system and that we need to carefully look at how we are managing our fiscal departments, including the assessor's office. So, I think that we all know, as supervisors, that there's a lot of room for improvement internally. And I certainly just, I don't believe that an entire master tax sharing agreement for the entire county should be held up by that, but that's my personal opinion. Supervisor Jertie, Williams, and McGordy?
Yeah, just in terms of, because the issue that obviously is raising some anxiety here is the, is the North State Street and the potential loss over a 15-year period of about $3 million in sales tax. I don't, first of all, it's a phase-out over 15 years. Secondly, it's inconceivable that there would not be additional development in, if that area, both north and south, was in the city limits. It's just, it's just nobody can guarantee at what pace that development would occur. You know, would it all occur in the first five years, first 10, first 15? Certainly, there will be more additional development within city limits than outside of city limits. So, there will be some of, at a minimum, a portion of that $3 million would be made up through additional tax increment from the property tax. It could, it could more than wipe out the $3 million if there was significant new development inside the city limits. There's just nobody can really guarantee which of the two plays out. Is it most of the $3 million gets wiped out, or is it more than the $3 million wiped out through the extra development? Two other things, we've talked about the process for annexations. I think there's one other process that hasn't been mentioned today. My understanding is, and I've never been on Lafco, but my understanding is that prior to a city proposing an annexation, a majority of the property owners being proposed for annexation have to agree. Is that the case, or is that just sort of customary?
The property owners?
Yeah.
No, not at the beginning. There is a process for the property owners in an annexation area to protest after it's approved by Lafco. The city can just proceed with an annexation proposal on its own and hand it off to Lafco.
I just know from the City of Fort Bragg discussions, the City of Fort Bragg has never wanted to propose an annexation that, where they didn't know in advance that there were a majority of property owners who wanted the annexation.
I think that's correct. That is mostly, I mean, most of the time you do annexations, it's not where, where the property owners don't want it. It's usually because a development project wants it, and some other folks are coming along for the ride. But you usually don't proceed with an annexation without a need from, from the property owners or the registered voters.
And then I just had one clarifying question. I did ask John Baker, unfortunately not until this morning before the meeting. Just to clarify, there's a provision that we've been talking about as it relates to Ukiah. It also relates to Fort Bragg and the Noyau Harbor area. And the clarifying question I had had to do with, that throughout the discussions, the intent was always that if the city were to annex, again, I believe with the support of the property owners, the Noyau Harbor area, the discussions were always, the sales tax, hotel tax is all in the North Harbor Drive, and the government property with no property tax, but county road is along Basin View Drive on the south side of the river. And I just wanted to get confirmation, because I, the map seemed to have changed a little bit with the red zone that was the balance area. It may have been a relatively recent addition or amendment to the map. Can we just get confirmation that it's, that it's everybody's understanding that if the City of Fort Bragg was to proceed with an annexation of North Harbor Drive, that they would also be required to annex the government property that the Harbor District owns, that CoStar owns that has no property tax on, it's kind of South Harbor Drive, but it's actually more having to do with Basin View Drive?
Yeah. I took a look at the map. The map shows a portion of the designated area, the green. If the city takes that portion, annexes that portion, they're supposed to take a corresponding amount of red. And the area you're talking about is in the green. So, the city could choose to just propose to annex the area on the north bank of the river, and then they would have to take a corresponding amount of the red, and they could leave out, not annex, the remainder of the green, the Noyau Harbor District area.
So, I just wanted to point out, that wasn't actually what was discussed in the meetings. The discussion was always about if the commercial property on North Harbor Drive was annexed, then the county, the city would also need to annex, whether it was one-for-one or close to one-for-one, they would have to annex. Again, there's government-owned land that has no property tax. The city, the city takes the sales tax out the north side, they need to take the government property at the south side of the harbor. And that's shown in the green, not in the red. So...
That is correct. I don't know if there's anybody else in the, in the audience that can comment on this, but I believe that map has been in that format for some time. I'm not as familiar with the areas as the rest of you all are, because I don't live in this community, so...
Jesse or City Manager San Jacomo, or... And then I guess, maybe while you're here, the question about the Lafco procedure as well?
Yeah. Jesse Davis, Chief Planning Manager, City of Ukiah. I do believe that the maps have remained the same. But to your question, I would, I would posit that by annexing any of that North Harbor area and the corresponding red area as well, you would create an irregular boundary that Lafco would have to address as a portion of that map, given that you would have essentially a peninsula that would exist. So, while I, you know, I understand the intent, as we've discussed as part of the ad hoc, I think that the, given the Lafco process, it would have to be considered as a portion of that request, because an irregular boundary would be formed if it were to be left out.
Okay. So, again, I'm not familiar with the Lafco process, but you're saying that the Lafco process would preclude the city from annexing the green area at the North Harbor Drive and the red area, without also including the green area that's, can only be accessed by going through the red area?
That is correct. And we've had similar conversations with the north and south of Ukiah as well, in part because, for example, the Lover's Lane development would not be able to be annexed by itself, because you would create a peninsula of city property to annex that area, thereby creating an irregular boundary. Another aspect that hasn't been discussed, too, is that prior to any annexation, the city has to pre-zone properties. And so, that city would then go through a public hearing process in which the environmental documents for that pre-zone would be evaluated by the public, and comments would have to be provided, or comments could be provided by the county. So, this is, again, a very much a dialogue and a process to arrive at an application for annexation when one is submitted to Lafco.
And just one other point in the agreement, I think it's Section 3A in the agreement. So, before the Lafco process, and before we even go through pre-zone, the annexing city in the county area are required to meet in good faith and take a look at the areas and try to cooperatively come up with what would be the proposed annexation going into it. And so, there's cooperative language within the agreement, and there's formal stuff through the Lafco process. It's just, you know, it's, and then there's protests, you know, available to property owners. Nobody wants to go through a fight, you know, from the very beginning. So, that's why the agreement is built upon cooperation. The other thing I want to point out, too, is we focused a lot on Ukiah. This agreement with my counterparts, the city managers of the other three cities, City Manager Bender was part of the core negotiating team for this agreement, for Willets, but representing the area, all of the, all of this, four city administrators. I mean, we don't know how votes will happen on boards, right, when it goes to the city councils, because presumably, if it passes here, then it will go on to each of the cities that will also have to go through the process of examining and voting as well. But from a city administrator level, from the city staff level, and then through the negotiating team that the county had at the table and the special counsel, we are all able to collectively come up with this agreement and all support it. My counterparts administratively at the, at those other cities support that. And again, Mr. Bender from Willets was actually one of the negotiating members, representing the cities on the negotiating team for the past, probably close to two to three years.
Thank you. Thank you for answering those questions. And Supervisor Williams? Thank you for answering those questions, and Supervisor Williams.
Yeah, John, I have a lot of the concerns you have about the finances, but I'm looking at what's best for 90,000 people, rather than treating residences and properties as pawns. Is it the city's money or the county's money? If you look at the big picture, take, get rid of those artificial boundaries and pretend we don't have cities and counties, it's some amount of economic growth, revitalization. And I don't think that'll happen with the county leading in the incorporated. I saw Fort Bragg put in a 14-million gallon reservoir. They dug a hole in the ground and they lined it, and they have, have water reserve. They're building three more of those. County, in that period of time, hasn't been able to make any progress on water. And I could propose projects, but I, you know, am I going to get the majority support for spending general fund in District 5 on water? Probably not, and vice versa. The county structure doesn't allow building infrastructure that 90,000 people need. And it's not just the people who will be directly benefiting in the city, having that infrastructure. It's the rest of us who like to go to Ukiah and vibrant city nearby. So, I, I'm, I share your concern about the long-term finances. I think we need to discuss that, bring in someone who can help us forecast and figure out what to do. It's really a separate track then, whether we should have a master plan for annexation.
Thank you, Supervisor McGordy.
I also wanted to address Supervisor Hashack's concerns about LAFCO. So, having served on it for three and a half years, I don't find it to be a particularly contentious body. And I, I think that at least this group is, is pretty, pretty holistic in the way that they look at the issues in front of them in terms of benefits. I don't see a lot of territorialism or other issues going on that, that make it sort of a dysfunctional body. It, it works pretty well, as far as I'm concerned. So, it, it could change, just as, as any board could. But at the moment, I, I think that they are a thoughtful, hard-working group that usually votes unanimously on a lot of the issues in front of us.
Well, I can understand, you know, these issues, and, you know, I, I agree that we need some kind of tax sharing agreement. It's like, but the question is, are we ready to deal with it? And can we, can we deal with it as a county internally? And then are we ready for that loss of revenue, which I think will happen? Okay? And, and so, what happens if we agree, we pass this right now? And then the cities go out, they pass it. So, within a couple of months, we have someone proposing an annexation. And, you know, maybe North Ukiah. Is the county ready to deal with that? Is Sarah Pierce, her position with this Almentum that's not capable of dealing with this? Are we able to deal with that and see what the results are? Are we able to get, you know, the financials that really make sense to us? Are we able to do that?
But, um, there we go. If I may through the chair, I can't say whether we're able to deal with that without actually seeing how much is involved in the annexation. I can tell you, it took me a good week to be able to create an Excel file just for one TRA, working with the City of Ukiah. We haven't fully agreed upon it, but I think we're close. I need to finish tweaking some of the numbers, and then I need to meet with them to confirm. That's just one TRA. If we were to propose an annexation to the north, we also have to, from my understanding of this agreement, balance it to the south. So, that's going to be multiple TRAs. I, I honestly can't tell you what that process will be like until we actually have something physically in front of us. So, it's a hard question to answer. I just know, it took me a good week to work with Excel to try to get the calculations in. And once we have that, then we'll work, need to work with Almentum to be able to override the system. So, it's really hard to say.
So, when you're working with Excel, can, can that be audited?
Everything is going to be audited. I mean, it opens up an audit risk for the, the, I don't want to say lack of controls, but taking something out of a system and making it a manual process, there is room for error and could be an audit concern. But yeah, it will have to be a portion of the audit for a property tax apportionment audit when we come up to that again in the next few years.
Supervisor Williams.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we hold up a tax sharing agreement because our accounting software doesn't work. This accounting software decision was before my time, and the software hasn't worked since I've been here, was it about five and a half years? Supervisor Hashack and I both. So, my rebuttal would be, if, if you think we're not ready now, when do you think we will be ready? I would think four years out, we may be having the same discussion that our software is broken. We can't get the vendor to make it work the way we want. I, at some point, I mean, they've been talking, having this discussion for two decades. At some point, we have to decide it's time. We needed an agreement in place. And if, you know, if I had some assurance that by a certain date, everything at, in the county offices will be ready for it, okay, maybe I'd be willing to hold it up. But I think we could wait a decade, and there will still be technical reasons why it's difficult for us. And it's no reflection on staff. You, you have software that, you know, everybody was well-intentioned, thought would do the job, and for whatever reason, it doesn't. And you have my empathy that this may be a hard ask. We may have to hire a firm to come in and help make it possible. But again, I don't, I don't think we hold it up. It's like saying, well, I can't do business because QuickBooks doesn't have a certain feature. Maybe you switch to a different accounting software.
If I may through the chair, I, and that's the thing, I don't know what other capabilities other softwares have. That, that I have no idea. We, I didn't research that. I just know our current system does not have the capability.
But the technical, the limitations of our particular accounting software can't be a reason to not have a tax sharing agreement with the cities.
Thank you, Supervisor Hashack.
On the other hand, if we don't know the finances of what we're getting ourselves into, how can we go ahead? It's kind of like the Health and Human Services where you wanted the plan.
Yeah.
Before we could proceed with that.
I'm just going to sit up here.
And, you know, so how can we go into this agreement? And assuming that annexations will start happening.
Yeah.
Without being able to really calculate the implications financially.
I appreciate the chair's tolerance here. I, but I think it's a good discussion, and it sounds like you've been discussing it for a long period of time, right? And we're trying to shove it all in here. So, John, I, my worry is, I'm with you. We don't have a financial forecast, and that does worry me. And I think we, we, the county could be in a bad financial position as a result of this decision. But imagine if we don't do anything at all, where we're all going to be in 10 years. This county is in decline. We already know what direction our revenue is like this, right? It's in real terms, apply CPI, we have less to work with every year. If we don't do this, we're going to be making cuts. If we do it, there's a chance that the flourishing cities will generate more county tax revenue. Maybe we're wrong on that, but it's like you, that risk reward, your status quo is a huge risk.
So, I would just like to add that I ran for election during shelter-in-place and during a pandemic. And at that time, I was on the Ukiah City Council, and I was able to work with state representatives, county representatives, and city council members. And we all worked together to help try to figure out what our businesses and what our community would do. City managers and the executive office also began meeting out of that time period and have continued to meet and to continue to collaborate. And I think that for me, as a member of ADHOC, watching all of the cities united in their agreement to move forward as a combined unit, really, I think, is an indication of the silos breaking down, of the picket fences being unbelt around our communities, because that's what we've had in the past. And right now, what we have is a, a dynamic where our executive office is working collaboratively with our, with our city managers' offices. And I think, you know, that's a, a key component. This is all four cities. This is not the City of Ukiah or the City of Fort Bragg, which have different scenarios than the other cities. But all of the cities have agreed that this is the best path forward to try to improve economic development and housing and to benefit all of the jurisdictions within our community. Supervisor Williams.
Yeah, one, one last pass here. The City of Ukiah could bring forward a plan for an annexation without this in place. And it would force us to have the discussion and negotiation. The only difference here is we're negotiating our broader scope more methodically upfront, rather than waiting until there's a specific proposal in front of us. I think that puts the county in a stronger position. Otherwise, it would be this rush for a particular project, and, and, you know, that would set a pattern in motion that may live on. So, it's not like if we said no to this, that we couldn't have the city's annex. It would just be more chaotic.
And likely more political.
More political.
I would say.
Well, it might be more specific, and we could deal with each one as it came up and deal with those specific issues.
Okay, well, there's a motion and a second on the floor, and we could vote by the button.
The motion carries with Supervisor Hashack dissenting.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, everybody, for coming today. And I just really want to thank Mr. Bakker and all of the cities that have contributed to this conversation. It was, it was a very lengthy conversation, but I think in the end, we've gotten to a place that all of our jurisdictions can be proud of, and hopefully it moves forward amongst the cities, and we're able to take a look. I, I certainly don't think it's going to be within two months that we're going to have any annexations, but I appreciate the optimism. Okay, I do want to note for the record that Item 3A is not being heard since the budget hearing concluded yesterday and was not continued to today. With that, we will adjourn to closed session to hear Items 5A, 5B, 5C, and 5D. We will return no sooner than 11:15 a.m.
And if I may through the chair.
Sure.
A public comment on the closed session items.
Thank you so much. Are there public comment on any closed session items? Seeing no one come forward and seeing no one on Zoom? We adjourn to closed session?
Sure, maybe we have 10 minutes.
Yes, please take 10 minutes, thank you.
I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something, you know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda? Let, let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or, or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like, even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. And the fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free, is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa, porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información, y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa, porque pues es buena persona la señora, y los ha tendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gaby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia, siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. Y en nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para, para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente, y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa, que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Te han, te hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí, pues los han ayudado, como este programa, los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé, como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí, y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber como, qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no.
Desconoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Cobelo. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir, comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
Donde nos visite, porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Willets, y puede ser en el parque. Gaby llega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana, o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro. Vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz, o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras. Y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia, para poder estar tranquilos. Así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significa niños felices, niños sanos. Y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
She has made me feel like I'm important and I can go at my own pace. And that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you got nobody.
It, it was helpful to have somebody there kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom, so it was very, it was very interesting and helpful, very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me, like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special. The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love and it's just natural, you know, that's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years. Jeanette said, yeah, I know, I'm going to be with you guys for five years. That's when I said, well, I guess I can trust her, she's going to be with us for five years.
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente. Y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy... Como que el ambiente era muy familiar, entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Felt like she cared for Sparrow too. And Sparrow really enjoyed it, yeah. She knew when Gabby came, we were going to be making something or learning something and she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were going to do.
Not only did we get the assistance with this, with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I think the relationship that we've built has been just, she's a part of the family.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit MendoReady.org. It's our one-stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map, and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for NICSIL and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
When I first realized that I was going to be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was going to have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program and I realized, oh, this is nice. And now look at me, I'm a, I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla. Y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted no las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
I don't know what's normal for a 22-month-old baby or an 18-month-old baby, you know. When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable and I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor, telling me, yeah, this is, this is going great.
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent and also to give, again, your children that head start in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And, you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned. I went from a very like rough type of life. I was homeless and she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
You know, because she's not just here for her, she's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggest that I would say, give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free, there's some perks, you know, they got some great resources.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting program.
I realized that my life was going to change dramatically in ways that I did not know or understand or even comprehend. I was going to have to really go to the well and become accountable and adjust to a lot of things differently.
Que queríamos era que naciera, ya, ah, sí, quiero tenerla. Entonces ahorita lo que tenemos es aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda.
Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
When we started the program, my daughter was about three months and my daughter's 22 months now. Something I love about my child, that she's healthy, she's happy. She knows that she's cared for and loved. Those are some of the things that I wanted to make sure that she had and she has them.
I'm happy today with my daughter. She's the greatest thing in my life and I'm glad to wake up and see her and everything I do, I do it for her.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él. De quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para Máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y la regla, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar, cosas raras también. No solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
I was more elated and thankful because for three months, I was in baby land. And when you're in baby world, you're just kind of flying by the seat of your pants and hoping, you know, that you're just supportive in the ways that you can be supportive.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla. Y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía, pues ya usted no las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabby a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
You know, my experience has been nothing but positive. Jeanette has been wonderful. She's on time. She lets me know if there's going to be any changes in the schedule.
Not only did we get the assistance with this, with this program, but we also made a really good friend. I'm happy to call Gabby our friend.
I still feel the challenge of being a parent now in today's world is immense. I think that you need support.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Don't be afraid to take that step. Like, don't be afraid to get help. Because, you know, you might think that you know what you're doing, but it's always okay to have extra support and don't do it alone.
Give it a try. You got nothing to lose. It's free. I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up-to-date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Part of being prepared is knowing your hazards and taking proper precautions. Visit MendoReady.org. On the Know Your Hazard page, you can find hazards for where you work, where you live, and where your kids go to school. On the Plan and Prepare page, you'll find a plan template. It's important to know what you're going to do, what you're going to take with you, how you're going to communicate, where you're going to go, and how to get there.
One great way to prepare is to pack a go-bag. Each member of your family should have their own go-bag. Visit our website, MendoReady.org, to get a list of items that should be in your go-bag.
Gathering and organizing important documents before an emergency is an important part of preparedness. So visit MendoReady.org today where you can find a list of important documents that you should have ready near your go-bag in case you have to evacuate.
Not every emergency requires people to evacuate. An emergency kit will have supplies for you to remain self-sufficient for 72 hours. Find a list of supplies for disaster kits on our website, MendoReady.org.
A prepared community is a resilient community that will recover faster from disasters. So take some time today, visit our website, get yourself prepared so you can be Mendo-ready.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting programs.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en un momento difícil o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Well, I was a new mom and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
The thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy, and going in, becoming a parent for her. I had no clue how to provide that.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá, cómo educar a un hijo. Y pues nosotros nunca, es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me, even though I was not a first-time mom, I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It was just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with, with the program is just having someone here for you, especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating and it can be very lonely. And having the home visitor changes that and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, hey, I'm noticing something. You know, let's find a way how to change it. And she's like, you know what, Amanda, let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you.
It's totally worth it. Like even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. And the fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información, y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa.
Sí, pues es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabi es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia, siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad y en nuestro caso que estamos solos en este país ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás. Entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar pero lo veo de la misma forma. Hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí pues los han ayudado como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé como con buenos consejos y así.
Sí, y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber como qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
No conoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo, muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos unir a... Comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
Donde nos visite porque ha sido nuestra casa, a veces nosotros vamos a Wellits y puede ser en el parque. Gabi llega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro, vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo, a veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz, qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia de conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia para poder estar tranquilos. Así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien y que las familias estén bien significan niños felices, niños sanos y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
Ella me hace sentir como si fuera importante y puedo ir a mi propio ritmo y eso es todo lo que necesitas a veces cuando te sientes como si no tienes a nadie.
Fue útil tener a alguien allí como si me agarrara y me guionara y me dejara saber que esto es como el normal. Se sentía como si me estaba convirtiendo en una nueva madre, así que fue muy interesante y útil, muy, muy útil.
Sabes, había esa parte consciente de mí como, ¿seré aceptada aunque no soy perfecta?
Lo que me gusta más es que ella realmente escucha.
El apoyo que me da es especial porque lo hace con amor y es, es simplemente natural, ya sabes. Eso es todo lo que podría decir. Solo se siente como alguien que he conocido desde que era pequeña.
Sabes, le dije a Jeanette, le dije, Jeanette, supuestamente te vas a quedar conmigo durante cinco años. Jeanette dijo, sí, sé, voy a estar contigo durante cinco años. Eso es cuando dije, bueno, supongo que puedo confiar en ella, ella va a estar con nosotros durante cinco años.
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así como que ya nos presentamos formalmente y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy... Como que el ambiente era muy familiar, entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
Se sentía como si le importaba cuidar a Sparrow también y Sparrow realmente disfrutó. Sí, ella sabía cuando Gabi veníamos que íbamos a estar haciendo algo o aprendiendo algo y ella empezaría inmediatamente a arrojar a través de las bolsas de Gabi para averiguar qué actividad íbamos a hacer.
No solo recibimos la asistencia con este programa, sino que también hicimos una amiga muy buena. Estoy feliz de llamar a Gabi como nuestra amiga.
Creo que la relación que hemos construido ha sido solo que ella es parte de la familia.
¿Están preparados? Somos el Oficio de Servicios de Emergencia y estamos comprometidos con proporcionar la información más actual y precisa para que tú y tu familia puedan quedarse a salvo durante una emergencia. Visita MendoReady.org. Es nuestra tienda de emergencias de una sola vez. Puedes inscribirte para alertas de emergencia, encontrar tu zona de evacuación preestablecida en nuestra mapa de emergencias actual y encontrar información de peligro y preparación.
Imagínate que estás enfrentado a un desastre como un incendio y te ordenan a evacuar. Te aseguro que deseas tener más tiempo en ese momento. Ahora es tu oportunidad de comprarte ese tiempo. Inscríbete en Nixel y MendoAlerts en nuestro sitio web, MendoReady.org. Hazlo hoy.
Si quieres que tu familia sea lo más resiliente posible, es importante tomar un poco de tiempo hoy y visitar MendoReady.org donde puedes buscar tus zonas de evacuación preestablecidas en nuestra mapa de emergencias actual. También puedes encontrar herramientas importantes para ayudar a mantener tu conciencia situacional adecuada como las cámaras de alerta de incendios de California y las cámaras de condiciones de carretera de Caltrans. Esperamos que tomes un poco de tiempo hoy para prepararte para que tu familia pueda ser MendoReady. Gracias.
Cuando me di cuenta de que iba a ser una madre, estaba super preocupada. Después de dos o tres semanas de reunión en el programa de visitas a casa, estaba totalmente cómoda con el hecho de que iba a tener un bebé. Sí, todavía estaba preocupada, pero al mismo tiempo sentía como si tuviera algún sentido de fuerza detrás de mí.
Si no tuviera esos recursos que Jeanette me proporcionó, creo que sería más difícil ahora.
Entré en el programa y me di cuenta, oh, esto es, esto es genial. Y ahora mira a mí, trabajo en un centro de recursos de familia con padres y familias, todo esto.
Estoy muy agradecida de que obtuve la oportunidad de conocer a mi visitante a casa porque sin ella creo que estaría diez pasos detrás de donde estoy ahora.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
No sé qué es normal para un bebé de 22 meses o un bebé de 18 meses, ya sabes. Cuando nos reunimos, normalmente discutimos y obtenemos un poco de progreso con el bebé. Me hace sentir cómodo y asocio mi parenamiento con ella, mi visitante a casa diciéndome, sí, esto está bien.
Así que es bueno saber dónde están, en qué etapa están para cada padre. Y también dar a tus hijos ese comienzo de educación.
Si tenía preguntas con ella, llamala por teléfono, ya sabes, fue muy relatable, muy personal. Y, ya sabes, con ella saber mis hijos, ya sabes, ella pudo ayudarme a través del camino. Quiero decir, hay tantas cosas geniales que he aprendido. Fui de un tipo de vida muy, como, duro. Fui sin hogar y ella pudo ayudarme a entrar a la escuela. Y en realidad tengo suficientes créditos para graduarme con un grado de negociación ahora.
Creo que realmente quiero mencionar solo que estoy agradecido de que aproveché porque es algo que me ha puesto en contacto con mi hijo o cerca de mi hijo y su desarrollo.
Quiero que otras personas y padres sepan que la visita a casa no es algo que deberías temer. Es en realidad algo que es necesario.
Ya sabes, porque ella no está aquí solo para ella, ella está aquí para ayudar con todo. Ella me ayudó a crear un espacio seguro donde me sienta cómodo lo suficiente como para pedir ayuda.
No tengas miedo de tomar ese paso, no tengas miedo de obtener ayuda. Siempre está bien tener apoyo extra.
sugiero, diría, intenta. No hay nada que perder. Es gratis, hay algunos beneficios, ya sabes. Tienen muchas grandes recursos.
Personalmente, creo que todos podrían beneficiarse del programa de visitas a casa.
Me di cuenta de que mi vida iba a cambiar dramáticamente de maneras que no conocía o entendía o incluso comprendía. Iba a tener que realmente ir al agua y ser responsable y ajustarme a muchas cosas de manera diferente.
Que queríamos era que naciera, ya, ah, sí, ya quiero tener entonces ahorita lo que tenemos a aprovecharla, quererla y cuidarla lo más que se pueda.
Creo que a todos nos preocupa la primera vez que nos dicen que vamos a ser padre.
Cuando comenzamos el programa, mi hija tenía unos tres meses y mi hija tiene 22 meses ahora. Algo que amo de mi hijo, que está saludable, está feliz, sabe que se ha cuidado y amado. Esas son algunas de las cosas que quería asegurarme que tenía y las tiene.
Estoy feliz hoy con mi hija, es la mejor cosa de mi vida y estoy contento de despertar y verla y todo lo que hago lo hago por ella.
Sí, bueno, yo también vengo de una familia separada. Creo que por eso también me motiva a estar más presente con él, de quizás también estar de la forma quizás que yo no la tuve para Máximo. Y también comprender que el padre no solo es el que pone los límites y las reglas, sino que también está ahí para hablar, acompañar, regalonear, jugar, cosas bien también. No solo ser el guía para el niño, sino que también un compañero de vida.
Estaba más emocionado y agradecido porque durante tres meses estaba en el mundo del bebé. Y cuando estás en el mundo del bebé, estás solo en el mundo de tus pantalones y esperas, ya sabes, que eres solo apoyador en las maneras en que puedes ser apoyador.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Cómo cuidarla, cómo desarrollarla, cómo educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted nos las dijo y todo como consejos y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente como un programa más frío, por decir algo no tan cercano a la familia, sino más bien un programa de estado programado para la ayuda solamente. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades. Siempre nos hemos podido apoyar en Gabi a través de su programa. Encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
Mi experiencia ha sido nada más que positiva. Jeanette ha sido maravillosa, está en el tiempo. Me dice si van a haber cambios en el horario.
No solo recibimos la asistencia con este programa, sino que también hicimos una amiga muy buena. Estoy feliz de llamar a Gabi como nuestra amiga.
Todavía siento la desafío de ser padre ahora en este mundo es inmenso. Creo que necesitas apoyo.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
No tengas miedo de tomar ese paso, no tengas miedo de obtener ayuda. Porque, ya sabes, podrías pensar que sabes lo que estás haciendo, pero siempre está bien tener apoyo extra y no lo haces solo.
Intenta. No hay nada que perder. Es gratis. Estoy agradecido de que aproveché porque es algo que me ha puesto en contacto con mi hijo o cerca de mi hijo y su desarrollo.
¿Están preparados? Somos el Oficio de Servicios de Emergencia y estamos comprometidos con proporcionar la información más actual y precisa para que tú y tu familia puedan quedarse a salvo durante una emergencia. Parte de estar preparado es saber tus peligros y tomar precauciones adecuadas. Visita MendoReady.org. En la página de "Saber tus peligros" puedes encontrar peligros para donde trabajas, donde vives y donde tus hijos van a la escuela. En la página de "Plan y Preparar" encontrarás un modelo planificado. Es importante saber qué vas a hacer, qué vas a llevar con ti, cómo vas a comunicarte, dónde vas y cómo llegar.
Una gran manera de prepararse es收拾 una bolsa de regreso. Cada miembro de tu familia debería tener su propia bolsa de regreso. Visita nuestro sitio web, MendoReady.org, para obtener una lista de cosas que deberían estar en tu bolsa de regreso.
Lugar y organizar documentos importantes antes de una emergencia es una parte importante de la preparación. Así que visita MendoReady.org hoy donde puedes encontrar una lista de documentos importantes que deberías tener listos cerca de tu bolsa de regreso en caso de que debas evacuar.
No todos los emergencias requieren que la gente evace. Un kit de emergencia tendrá suministros para que puedas permanecer autodidactico durante 72 horas. Encontrad una lista de suministros para kits de desastre en nuestro sitio web, MendoReady.org.
Una comunidad preparada es una comunidad resiliente que recuperará más rápido de los desastres. Así que toma un poco de tiempo hoy, visita nuestro sitio web, prepárate para que seas MendoReady.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the Home Visiting Program.
I think that as a parent now, I'm grateful for support more than I was before.
I filled out that form not knowing what I was doing. I am very, very grateful that I did it because it's really helping me a lot.
Bueno, creo que por mi parte esperaba algo totalmente diferente, como un programa más frío, por decir algo, no tan cercano a la familia. Y a través del programa nos hemos dado cuenta que también pasa a ser una familia con nosotros porque nos apoya en los momentos difíciles o cuando nos hemos visto en dificultades.
Well, I was a new mom and I had no experience taking care of a newborn.
There isn't like a book on how to raise a kid.
We come from like a lot of family history of, you know, drugs, violence, alcoholism. So we didn't want our daughter to experience any of that.
I thought that a parent was supposed to be loving, nurturing, supposed to be there for their kid, you know, provide food, shelter, joy. And going in, becoming a parent for her, I had no clue how to provide that.
Cómo pensar educarla, ajá, cómo educar a un hijo y porque nosotros nunca... es la primera vez que íbamos a ser padre.
What I think parents should know about home visiting is that you can learn a lot of new things and tips and tricks, how to take care of the baby and what to do. And if you're, you know, stuck in a routine and everything being monotonous, like they give you new resources and new tools, how to handle parenthood.
It was nice to have them kind of guiding me. Even though I was not a first-time mom, I felt like a first-time mom.
It totally blew my mind over time. So much information that I had no idea about. You know, she was straightforward when, you know, teaching me this stuff and answered any of my questions. It was just a really positive experience.
What I think that parents could benefit with the program is just having someone here for you, especially for first-time parents. It can be very isolating and it can be very lonely and having the home visitor changes that and it feels very good.
For me, having a home visitor is like having a second mom there.
A lot has changed. I'm definitely more knowledgeable taking care of her. And I know that anytime I need advice or help from somebody, I can just call her.
It's just that little positive nudge to, "Hey, I'm noticing something. You know, let's find a way how to change it." And she's like, "You know what, Amanda? Let's pick you up, dust you off, and let's go over to, you know, see about either getting your driver's license or seeing about, you know, going to college, see if we can start something for you."
It's totally worth it. Like, even if you're on the fence at first, you don't feel like having a stranger coming in your house and teaching you about your little one, do it anyway. You know, you get the help that you need. You get professional advice on things you may not know about your child. The fact that the program has no fees or anything, it's all totally free, is fantastic.
Yo creo que si conozco a alguien que está próxima a ser mamá, lo primero que haría sería recomendarle el programa porque te entrega mucho apoyo, mucha información y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Pues es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha tendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gabby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia. Siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad y en nuestro caso que estamos solos en este país ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos, como dice Carla, están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás, entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma.
Que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí, pues los han ayudado, como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé, como con buenos consejos y así.
Ah, sí, y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber cómo, qué actividades hacer con Maximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
No conoce.
No conoce, claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo, es muy bonito aquí.
Cuando más podemos reunir, a... comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
¿Dónde nos visité? Porque ha sido nuestra casa. A veces nosotros vamos a Willy's y puede ser en el parque. Gabby llega, cómo hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro. Vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Maximo. A veces ella lo evalúa, cómo está su sentido motriz, o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia a conducir, que era un objetivo que teníamos en cuanto a la familia para poder estar tranquilos, así que encuentro que ha sido fundamental el apoyo.
El objetivo del programa es que las familias estén bien. Y que las familias estén bien significan niños felices, niños sanos, y eso en un futuro es adultos sanos y un mundo mejor. Entonces está bueno.
She has made me feel like I'm important and I can go at my own pace and that's all you need sometimes when you're feeling like you got nobody.
It was helpful to have somebody there kind of holding my hand and guiding me and letting me know this is kind of the normal. It felt like I was becoming a new mom, so it was very, it was very interesting and helpful, very, very helpful.
You know, there was that self-conscious part of me like, will I be accepted even though I'm not perfect?
What I like the most is that she really listens.
The support that she gives me is special because she does it with love and it's just natural, you know, that's all I could say. It just feels like somebody that I've known since I was little.
You know, I said to Jeanette, I said, "Jeanette, you're supposed to be with me for five years." Jeanette said, "Yeah, I know, I'm gonna be with you guys for five years." That's when I said, "Well, I guess I can trust her, she's gonna be with us for five years."
Yo creo que quizás pasó como a la segunda visita o algo así, como que ya nos presentamos formalmente y luego ya creo que la segunda visita estaba como todo más tranquilo, como muy... como que el ambiente era muy familiar, entonces yo me sentí muy cómoda.
I felt like she cared for Sparrow too, and Sparrow really enjoyed it, yeah. She knew when Gabby came we were gonna be making something or learning something and she'd instantly start digging through Gabby's bags to find out what activity we were gonna do.
No reportable action. Thank you. Have a nice day. June 25.